We got it set up so nobody can butt in tonight.
We think it's done, but...
One lady's gotten into the last two meetings.
Well, she wasn't like that for an incident.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, with that. And I think she got to go on in the chair and didn't get to catch this.
That's why I just feel like, all right, moving.
And that gentleman, I thought he was saying something, had his hand raised and... You know, I don't know if you ever saw him, you know?
All right, at seven o'clock, so I called meeting to order. Who's calling the roll for us? All right, let's go.
All right, Mr. Habbes?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Muscat?
Here.
And Mr. Green?
It's from my providing permission, meeting is called to order, July 19th, 2021. Fourth session, call to order, it's topical.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Ms. Hyde?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
All right, well then, we'll go ahead and get rolling on item 3A. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Berkeley group.
Sure, Rebecca Cobb, good to be here in person tonight and being with all of you, which we haven't been able to do for a while. I think my colleague, Kelly Davis, he's probably heard China before, is going to be along tonight. He's not at the moment, should be joining us shortly, I'm sure. Would just thank you for sticking with it through to this point. We're at the last scheduled joint work session, so hopefully we can make some final decisions tonight and start moving this into public hearing phase. But for tonight's agenda, we're going to review the public input from the open house that we had. We're going to finalize some focus items. The last time we met, there was a question about preserving rural character and ways to test can happen for the county. And then there's also a question about Edward tourism, which has specifically found the way to come back. Then discuss that, and then get into any other edits, and then into the next steps for this process. So just looking at the open house. The plan for that was we were here in person as well as virtually online. We have small crowds here as well as small groups online participated. And gave a presentation that just kind of outlined the changes on the ordinance. We had a little question and answer time, we got some boards out for those that were here that could take a look at those and ask questions. We also did an exit survey. The exit survey stayed open for two weeks after that presentation, just give people some additional time to read the ordinance, page by page if they wanted to. So then we can go on and into exit survey. Survey questions included just the general satisfaction with the changes, if they thought the changes were appropriate, and then also just the meaning of preserving rural character. Now, that was something that we learned in the first survey, we wanted to preserve rural character. Well, that can mean different things for different people. So we pursued that question a little bit to see what people were thinking. We thought to see what kind of support the work was given that preserve rural character, in addition to diving a little further into additional setbacks, if we want to increase the setbacks for the primary and secondary roads. And then limits on outdoor amplified music, that side to that Edward original item. And then any other suggestions. We just had open question where anybody had suggestions, questions, comments, they could supply those on the survey. The survey had 13 responses. We acknowledge that's a very small pool, but we would say that, you know, those opinions still matter. And so we have collected that information and utilized it. Of that, of the survey, a little over half felt satisfied with the changes. There was some more desire to understand some of the changes that seem to be more comfortable, I think, with the topic itself. There were four of us on it that provided general suggestions and comments. I'm not going to get into those tonight. The full survey report has then provided to you all that you could read those items to decide if there's anything that you want to address. And moving into the final focus item. The first is the preserve rural character. And so that survey question, what does preserving rural character mean? We asked that, what we heard was it meant protection of bodies of water, the maintenance of rural land uses, protecting history, limiting the expansion of big retail and substantial subdivisions, and then maintaining low taxes. And so the proposed ordinance does contain any standards to help achieve these desires. We did the full details of that in the memo that we sent. We provided section references, so you can go to those in the lower section. But just generally speaking, what tonight, we include the separate day preservation overlay area, which is going to protect water bodies. There's a use matrix, which limits the types of uses in the AC district. Most marshaled users are not allowed in the AC district. Those that are would be subject to this comment. And then we also addressed impact of various uses through the standards. There's a historic preservation district, which can protect historic sites. And then there's also the ability to do farmstead and cluster subdivision, which there are various to maintain empty stays, cluster things together, in the federal ordinance. So farmstead was created, if you make the inlay on, the subdivision is near towards larger law. And I believe the ordinance does have a definition, a exact definition of farmstead. It's not need to pull that up?
Fifteen acres, because I put water. With the farmstead definition, fifteen, fifteen acres.
Fifty acres, yeah. Fifty, fifty. Internal systems, large lots intended for small farm use and estates.
Now, farmstead subdivision means a subdivision of two to seven lots with a lot minimum of fifteen acres or twenty five. So one thing that that's not mentioned in the slide is, or the current ordinance, is the taxes. The overall tax rate for the county is not something the zoning ordinance can address. But we felt that it was worth mentioning to you all, and because it gives, there is an option for an ag and forest overlay, that's something that the county can create. It actually does not have to be in the zoning ordinance. Some localities have it in the zoning ordinance, some do not. But basically, the county does make some area that they would allow landowners to then volunteer. You can't place it on them, corrupt it, if you can volunteer to be part of that program, and then they can have reduced taxes in that way. So that's an option, but not something that just has to happen through the zoning ordinance.
That would be over above land edge?
Yes. And we provided you with an ag guide, a rural preservation guide document. There's a little bit more information about that AC in that document. So then, looking at the next question, we provide some questions about potential new standards. And we wanted to decide to see if there was no acceptance of these. Again, we would have liked, you know, more participation in the survey, but the results that we saw of those taken with the survey was that the majority supported maintaining forest areas along roadways in the AC district. Majority supported requiring a percent of precover for business and industrial zones. There's a split opinion requiring for some precover for residential, and then majority supported limited block coverage for non-farm buildings. So the things that we have currently in the ordinance that fits with these are transportation corridor overlay has a ten-foot wide, granted landscaping requirement. And this would include the full length of the primary routes, the route 316 and 30. The full length of those is under this calculation for overlay. There's also transitional buffers on a business and industrial use for a multifamily above the AC or the RR district. And then there's requirement for open space to be preserved in the planning we developed in your cluster subdivision. Lot coverage is something that's not addressed in the ordinance, and it is a recommendation that we'll talk about a little bit later. So then, looking at the AC district setbacks, this is something else that we wanted to explore and see, it's already proposed with a bit of an increase, so we wanted to see if all the good consideration that we had further, what we saw was that the small majority prefer retaining setbacks on primary roads at seventy-five feet. There's a split opinion on a secondary road between seventy-five feet and fifty feet. They are proposed currently in the AC district, a hundred feet from primary roads and seventy-five feet on secondary roads. And then, moving into the recommendations for the preserving rural character. So as I mentioned, the exit survey was not very robust, but we did take those answers into consideration while we were forming these recommendations. We also considered past discussions with you all, which we thought were, and also the previous survey, as well as what we've heard from stakeholders when we did those stakeholder interviews. So we kind of, you know, collected all of that together, sifted through, considering where, you know, common themes were, and then also took a look at similar localities and what they were doing. And then came up with new recommendations. I'll just zip through them quickly, and then we can kind of discuss the items. So there's, so broader recommendations too, in your memo, right now, I'm just going to go over. We have a fuller zoning ordinance related recommendations, and there's some other recommendations about your comprehensive plan. There's also the ag guide, where you can make some policy decisions and that sort of stuff as well. So, for tonight's first recommendation is that while the transportation corridor requires that front is landscaped, it's ten feet, ten feet is fairly narrow, that could be expanded, and we recommend increasing it from ten to twenty-five feet. We feel like, you know, with that increased setback, there is not, there's no space there that could be utilized to upgrade that landscape.
So that's, she's, I believe, a ten-foot setback from the right away line, and then a ten-foot of landscaping space, and what you all were suggesting would could go to twenty-five.
And what exactly with the landscape, I mean, are there any regs on that at all?
Yes, so we do detail in the transportation corridor overlay, we do detail what that includes. So it talks about the size of trees that it's planted and how far apart its tree, you know, as a minimum, so there are specific details.
And this is going to affect farmland also?
Over that.
It's going to affect farmland also?
So it's along the corridor, so 316?
Right, but I mean, you have farms up there on thirty.
It overlays any district along that, but it only covers, yeah, I think, seven hundred fifty acres. And so that's in existence now. This is, that's not something that is newly created, you already have a transportation corridor overlay. We did strengthen the landscaping in terms of being specific about what is, what it asks for.
That's, that's not going to be a requirement for existing agriculture.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, most of them plant right up in line. It's okay, yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
So other recommendations include additional provisions require business and industrial development to maintain ten percent free canopy. This is something that is allowed by state code. The ten percent is the maximum that the state can allow. And when we're talking free canopy, it is in twenty years' time that the lot would have ten percent free canopy coverage.
And that's ten percent that's not covered by building, that's ten percent of the actual land around.
Yeah, and, and there are, you know, you can also count the buffer landscaping, parking lot landscaping, those things count as being part of that. Right line there.
Just with the, just in the buffer, not the, not the whole area.
That, that bullet is for the, the whole parcel, that they can count the buffer area towards the percentage that you would require, and with that number, if that's not required.
If it's a business or industrial, they would have to maintain ten percent of what is there currently, or?
They can, if they, you know, if they need to clear the site, you're grading, if they have to plant that so that the lot has at least ten percent in zone here.
Ten percent of the total?
Total lot.
The total lot, not the, not the buffer.
Right.
Thank you. It's a lot. Because a lot excluded that will build equipment though.
Yes, yes.
So this is just remaining land around the buildings, buffer parking lot. And so a tree in parking lot covers part of those, it's just to take every long, along the buffer part. So this does not good footprints building. But still, there's still be a lot, you know, some, some malls, some industrial, or, you know, you know, they're doing three on the day, so that would be twenty or thirty acres, ten percent of that, that's a...
And so you don't have to be ten percent, you can be five percent, or you don't have to be a percent at all. It's just something that's available to people to try to do that.
This will have to be planning commissions in ten, or that never, I don't think it will. This is basically your currently heard as recommendation.
I, I would say...
It's just the public.
These are recommendations, these are kind of options for you to choose from. You know, you asked last meeting to, you know, how can we preserve, how can we preserve our rural character? So these are things that other localities utilize. I would say, you know, probably our toughest recommendation would be the first one and the last one that I have on this slide. The other two were here for your consideration, if that's the route you wanted to go. So with that, we're, you know, we're talking about the business industry, there's also residential development. That varies depending on the density of the residential development. You can require up to twenty percent. And then, let's see, ten minutes or less per paper is twenty percent, fifteen percent for eleven to nineteen minutes, and ten percent of twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two. Again, those are the maximum percentages that we use to deal with, or not utilize it at all.
How is compliance determined for that, and then how is it enforced down the road?
So it, it is more difficult to, you know, you do have to have someone, you know, really check on those things. Site plan, seeing, you know, landscaping plan is usually included, and so you look at, you know, the size of the trees that going in and what their maturity is going to be at the twenty-year timeframe. And then, you know, yeah, you do have to, you can notice a lot of dead and drying trees. You've got to go out and say, hey, you're not made into, you know, this department that you agreed to need to replant.
That's the responsibility of the planning commission, right?
Yes, the...
Same office, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And they said, they're so understaffed now that they can't do it. I wanted to bring up an example. We just finished the Hanover solar park. They had to grow all the requirement for all that buffering, eighty percent of it's dead. They're not going to go back and replace any of it, just like all the businesses around here.
Of course, they will.
Huh?
And force it, they will.
Well, they might, because they're a bigger county, but they're, they probably won't, I'm just saying.
That's, that's initiative, we have staff.
That, no, that's what I wanted to bring up. We have to think about that too, because we don't have enough people working in the office to cover what we do now.
The last one here is lot coverage for non-farm buildings, limiting that to twenty percent in the AC running district. So, you know, again, this is not for farm buildings, this is houses, garage, small sheds, those types of things. If we wanted to, it's a twenty percent. You know, we're recommending twenty percent. We looked at other communities, Chesterfield, Polpepper, Bedford, Loudoun, and that's comfortable to pull up those communities, I'll be in as well for that, so that's another twenty percent there. So I would just open up the floor, I've already heard, you know, some discussion, kind of, somewhat of a feeling of ones that you might not want, and that's, that's okay, but are there any, you know, here recommendations that you do want to place into the new ordinance?
So I'm guessing on the last one, you're going to do a grandfather again on that? Because I'm sure it's probably some out there that already more than...
Everything that's in, you know, anything that's changed in the current ordinance, whatever is on the ground tonight is, is not part of it yet.
And on item one, you know, pass it on to somebody else. Again, that would, that would hinder a farmer from going out and renting new acreage right in the plant. He would have to do this.
No.
He won't.
Doesn't apply to farms.
Okay, okay.
Some are not commercial development.
Even if it's rural?
Yes.
So if someone wants to develop to, say, same amount of subdivision in an AC area, and it happened to be a holding B, so it was full lot, it's allowed in, so they, they would have to still do the twenty percent of planting trees to adhere to this, right where?
If he decides to adopt the, the third item there, then yes, they can do that. So, you know, I feel this thing, that maybe the second and third items are not things that are feasible, that they would take, you know, additional manpower to enforce, that maybe they are not good fit for the community. Is there any likely disagreements of that?
I think on the upper visual, I think this is, fifteen to twelve percent free canopy throughout the entire lot, which is kind of a long reason.
But not just the, it's not just the hotbed, it would be for the lot, that is the line, probably.
I thought what we had spoken about earlier in our previous meetings was the buffer, the buffer area along, whatever it really was, was the seventy-five feet, is that what it was?
Yeah, we... Then, second, second. But that didn't have anything, that didn't have anything to do with...
They were recommending whether twenty-five foot buffer. I thought that's kind of where we were going on.
Well, Berkeley's not suggesting a twenty-five foot buffer. They're suggesting a twenty-five foot buffer in the transportation corridor overlay, just around thirty and thirty-six. That would could go from ten foot to twenty-five feet. It's, your setback on the building is, in, on commercial, is it fifty feet or a hundred?
Fifty.
For the, for the AC district, we are recommending a hundred feet from primary road.
Or from a primary, yeah. Yeah, definitely, yeah, so you've got a hundred feet, a hundred...
And what is it on the solar? Okay, on primary roads, it's, we are recommending a hundred fifty, so that would...
I may, road's a hundred feet, secondary is seventy-five feet.
But this is definitely what we had kicked around in the previous...
We hadn't discussed this previously.
Yeah, I didn't, that's, I thought, I thought we were in Canada for the ring, and what we were going to do on the previous meetings with us. I think the setback, we were...
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I think the setback, you know, there was just a question on, you know, whether that should be increased further, you know, looking into other localities. At this point, we do not recommend, we see it to be on far with other localities. With this increase, I think the increase that we're doing is appropriate. It's just a matter of maybe want to, you know, end with any of the other items, such as increasing landscaping a lot from fifteen and thirty, or doing the lot covering percentage, if there's anything like that. If that's not something, you don't feel like we are, you know, giving your community, you don't want to throw these in at this, this time, and you don't have to do that.
If, if I may, I think the lot cover is probably a more conservative approach than some of the buffering. If we don't want to have any type of dedicated buffering, we can look at the can, so we'll be with. Again, we already require some buffering, which would take, would take you to be going more back, and more easily than just again. So I think some dedicated buffering along the, the primary roads, it's a ten-foot or a roadlet, it's ten percent coverage for the whole lot, that's, I mean, over there. But again, to...
That's a great, so like, if we all agree on that, you'll just take that out, you won't bring it up in public comments of it.
Right, these are not in the ordinance, this is simply for discussion purposes.
I mean, I said I wouldn't do anything.
Everybody just take a quick setback.
Right.
Right, and just remind everybody what we're talking about and how we got here. So these, these provisions are not in the current draft ordinance, okay? This is being driven by comments that were made by both of these boards at the last joint work session, and by comments received from the public through the exit survey. What we came out of that saying was that one of the most important things we want to accomplish through this is be able to preserve rural character. This is Berkeley Group's, basically, menu of options that we have based on what's allowed, you know, in, in the way that the state code allows us to draw these things up. Also, remember, we're limited somewhat by what the state allows and doesn't allow here too. The tools that we can utilize to preserve rural character, and they've taken an additional step, and they have actually gotten us to define what preserve rural character even means, because that can be such a cross, broad, and, and, right, that's the word I'm looking for, topic. So again, what, what Berkeley Group is doing here is exactly what we've asked them to do, and what they're asking from us now is feedback on whether or not we want to implement these tools in addition to what we have in the draft. And so I'd agree, I think it sounds like there's general agreement, and if somebody doesn't, but now's the time to chime in, that we, we like the idea of increasing the landscape buffering in the transportation corridor overlay district, which is number one. Doesn't seem that anybody really likes two or three with the tree canopy recommendations. Haven't really gotten any strong feedback on number four from anybody yet, that I personally, I'm not sure.
Four, yeah.
Okay. Just out, would you mind elaborating on?
So lot coverage is similar to the, the tree canopy coverage. So you would look at, you know, this is the size of the lot, this is the size of the buildings. The buildings that are not farm-related cannot be more than twenty percent of the lot size. The buildings that are not farm related cannot be more than twenty percent of the lot size. Um, so house, garage, can't be more than twenty percent. And what we see, um, in other localities is this is to, you know, keep down the clutter, keep open space available, um, so, you know.
So on a one acre lot, you would be talking about a total allowable building coverage of about a little over forty square feet.
One, one thing that you've got to remember.
I'm sorry. Eighty six hundred.
Our ordinance, uh, does not allow any buildings in front of the, uh, any building is all from the right away line, seventy five feet on the secondary and hundred feet on primary. So any building coverage would be behind the front of the house.
Right, I missed the number, I'm sorry. It says eighty six hundred or eighty seven hundred.
Yeah, so, you know, they, they do a fair amount, you can, you know, still have a, a nice sized house and a garage and a shed and, you know.
And that's on one acre, you can vigor that number.
As long as, as long as all of that behind the.
Right, as long as it supplies with all the other restrictions that are in there.
Is there a minimum farm size? That's what I don't understand either, but it's lot coverage for non-farm buildings. Why would a house have a non-farm building? I mean, have a farm building if there wasn't a farm? And what's the definition of a farm?
Yeah, what is the definition of a farm?
Because does that just depend on a farm? I mean, or any lot, like, said, a one acre lot can have.
So, so there can be, um, you know, a, a ten acre parcel that has, maybe they also have a larger parcel that they are farming. Um, and so on this ten acre parcel, their home would count towards the non-farm building lot size. Their, um, garage that has their, you know, vehicles in it counts to that non-farm building lot size. If they have a barn or they're storing their pay and their tractor and, you know, their farming land, then that is excluded from that lot.
Well, what if you have, which I've been, uh, one acre taking out a land useful in the house? That's still, is that going to fall in the, uh, twenty percent draw? Or is that, is that forced for the land to exist?
So your, if it's a one acre parcel, if survey has one acre.
Yeah, yeah, put, put one acre out to build a house.
So your, your house and, you know, whatever buildings are there that are not part of the farm have to be less than eight thousand, what's your?
Eight thousand seven hundred feet, whatever.
What scenario would, can you think of that would be an example of violation of that?
So, you know, with it being twenty percent, it, it's, it's, you know, pretty high, it gives people a lot of room, but there are people who, you know, like to build lots and lots of sheds. Um, and they might have a smaller parcel, and, and this is the kind of prevents of affairs, you know, not a million little shed covering up a whole new parcel, that it does preserve some open area.
Right, and I think that's the biggest thing that it comes down to, is preserving the open area of however you want to slice it, if you're talking about somebody, you know, building a nine thousand square foot house on an acre or, uh, you know, having, um, you know, a bunch of large, even just a couple of large buildings on a slightly larger lot. Uh, it's, it's essentially, you know, it's taking that open space and that rural aspect out of the land once you exceed that coverage.
Right.
So I wouldn't get too tied up in, you know, the guy that has fifteen sheds, you know, because he probably got other problems going on too, probably a lot more than garlic. Um, I think more, let's focus on the overall coverage of land in the AC there.
I think, I think setbacks, required setbacks, um, buildings, if you've got a one acre lot, you've got a fifteen foot side lot setback, a thirty foot rear lot. I don't remember exactly what those are.
Right.
Seventy five foot in the front. Um, if somebody wanted to buy acre of land in the subdivision and build a nine thousand square foot house, uh, why not?
Right, we're talking AC also, so maybe we're too tied up in the acre example in a game, just to give somebody an idea of the size, we're talking five acres, you know?
Yeah, so, yeah. But if you're, you know, if you're talking five acres, if you're eight thousand feet on the one acre, that's forty thousand, is that? Forty thousand square feet, uh, that's, that's a lot of, a lot of coverage.
This, this, this seems largely non-controversial, and if very many folks want to do it, and if they do, they can buy a large lot themselves, so, um, I, I purposefully find this.
If I could, I'd find, I believe, and so I did.
Well, no, it's a, and, and again, there could be very few instances where people are going to like to do more than that, and if they do, this is not really appropriate in the next culture.
Right, and, but I think that point might be that the, the, or the, the regulations are basically that preclude this from happening anyways without adding.
Yeah, certainly.
It would just be another layer of, of, that really wouldn't accomplish any more than we already do.
And that's a case in the instances that it would actually happen, pure and parlor claim.
Right.
What's, why have that extra, you know?
Right. I think, I think we're moving in that direction here, it just seemed like an additional layer that we probably don't need with everything else that we've already.
Did you pick this from other counties? Do you know how many other counties have that extra?
I can't tell you how many, how many other counties there are, and other, other counties that do use lot coverage, um, restrictions. They, you know, some do it just on, you know, like, we have districts, some do it in all of their districts, so the percentage goes up as you increase the, um, the lot. The residential, you know, it's just.
Sure.
I'm just going to heavily, heavily count it, or count it.
So we took a look, um, for this at Chesterfield, Culpeper, Bedford, and Loudoun. Um, they all were around twenty percent. Um, Loudoun, a comparable district, is just like eighteen percent of the.
Rebecca, sure, you have a comment?
I just wanted to speak real quick on the farm buildings. Um, if they come in to get a, for a farm building, they don't have to get building permits for any of that. What we look for is the tax exempt number for farm. Now, they do have to meet setbacks, which currently is twenty five feet from the property lines, but other than that, we don't regulate them unless they want the electricity in, then they have to get an electrical plan. So any of these farm buildings, we wouldn't be regulating.
In, in.
And those are exempt from this one, when they happen.
You don't regulate a lot of sheds, right? If they're twelve by twelve, in the low.
If they're a small shed, we do not.
So they, you wouldn't ignore it, is there?
If it's under two hundred and fifty six, they don't have to get up.
Yeah, because twelve by twelve could warrant forty fours, so.
Okay, so I, I think, I think the consensus that I'm gathering, unless somebody feels strongly that we include this, is that we just go ahead and exclude that. And so that leaves us agreeing that we would.
For what?
Yeah, agreeing with number one. And, and, and agreeing not to include it. Two, three.
If we can, is there a waiver process, or do you have access to this?
All of these are waived by Louisiana at a certain point, so.
It's got to be hardship.
Right, you have regard.
Are we ready to move to advertising? The other question is on providing the rural character. We're just going to talk about the advertising. Um, the question here was specifically about limiting the noise. Um, there's a date here, it was the last, what's that, about that state code only allows, um, greater restriction of amplified music to advertise them? Other noise has to follow the noise ordinance. Um, and what we've established is that, you know, communal noise ordinances exempt farm and ag uses. Um, and so we would recommend, um, someone with, you know, outdoor, use of amplified music between nine P M and seven A M on Sunday to Thursday, and then ten P M and seven A M on Friday to Saturday. There was a clear consensus that the, the people there responded, um, but just from our experience on this topic, we do recommend, um, not leaving this to the, the noise ordinance.
Bill, if that's, by saying amplified, is that impossible?
Most noise, most noise set of dust, well, that is not, I mean, it's, there's no way to eliminate the outside noise. So I guess amplified music of any kind, including the guys, boombox music, would be part of it.
Well, this is, you know, at the advertising event, this would be, you know, advertising event, where usually, you know, sometimes I invite someone to, you know, have a band play music or, you know, singing rock and roll their lot, people, that sort of stuff.
So are we talking about permanent event, or are we talking about an event that would be, uh, would miss the requirement?
These advertising acts.
And if I may, so, uh, noise ordinance, which we all know are inherently physical reports, and at a party that I have next week, they'll have to think about something quiet down, and I'll turn it back up in a while. That's different from a commercial venue, we talked before about such a wedding venue, and these are official use permits. Um, having amplified noise all day long, every day, could be a real nuisance. We've got lots of neighbors really close together, and even the agricultural areas, that it could be a real nuisance. So I'm wondering about amplified music, not just at eight, nine P M and seven A M, but that all day, every day. Is that something we can take a closer look at?
So is this something, I think I've heard, what permits not going to be, uh, required?
Well, and, and some things, with, with, with these venues in the agriculture, when we've got two hundred feet, that's second to the ordinance, that, that have some patients on, nice amplified music and whatnot. But in point of fact, and, and one of them I've gotten, which one of this, I think is then, they can get that official use permit, that you would then be able to say, hey, this much noise and this much amplification. Whereas if I write, uh, it, it drives, it's great, I have a scenario when I was young, and, and in my health, most of the years, there was noise going twenty four seven, that's the day before air decision. So the wind is broken all summer long, and noise came to have all day, all night. Uh, and, and so I mean, amplified, yes, again, regular noise, yeah, in a yard, one thing, amplified music over all day long, Saturday and Sunday, it has to be. And again, I think we have a, this is.
Yeah, if, if you live close to. Then, then you, like that, you don't have a problem, that's why I was asking about the permits.
It's really.
At least you would be, you would be, you would know that then it's coming with the different.
So you have to be careful about advertising, because it is allowed by the state code. And, um, you know, the normal parts of the advertising that are just showing, you know, farming, or letting people participate in farm operations, um, or, or this is the, that's not going to be on the, on the do. There is this option, you know, for the amplified music, um.
Yeah. There's no definition of dustable, or whatever, you know? That's, and, and. You shall have no music above the ninety five decibels.
It, I think it's in the code that we have, it's not part of the zone ordinance, but I think it is in the code, but.
If I remember right, I think there was probably a Supreme Court case of Virginia that said it at a hundred. Uh, however, again, you cannot, even with the noise meter, take away the middle noise from this band playing.
I want to sum the number, how do you even?
Well, they're saying here, any acid, uh, music, it's really, or somebody is at their pool and puts a boombox out there and it's amplified.
But is the definition of agro tourism, does it have anything to do with music? I think it could be an event that I understand.
Right.
But the statute doesn't contain too. Musical, or dustable, or anything like that, it just allows agro tourism, tourism.
Great, so the definition, um, in your ordinance, it states on, so for, there's any activity carried out at a farm, like on a farm brewery, or distillery, or an agricultural operation, that allows members of the general public for recreational or educational purposes to view or enjoy rural activities, including farming, wine or eating, ranching, historical cultural, purposes own activities, or natural activities, attractions, regardless of whether or not that was just a claim or a particular activity. These rural activities also include or have some to do with on tours, tours of individual agricultural operations, pay rise, airline training, animal exhibit, crop managers, educational programs, workshops, or demonstrations related to agricultural, civil, all agro tourism events that place on operations upon and we need to order the student agricultural operations. These are not included events in this, in this, in this.
So in the, in the majority of the cases, if you had agro, agro tourism, it's going to be in a rural area, and, and not likely to have a subdivision jammed up against the farm.
Uh, yeah, but, but, but none of those uses involve music. It, it, it could always involve dancing, but they could have all those events without having amplified music.
They could have those events without having amplified music. And this would be, you know, if they're having some, you know, uh, pay rise, and, you know, pay your raise in, and they decide to have, have a band, setting, then offering, be there. What this says is that, you know, after nine P M, you know, on Sunday, they have to cut that off. For, um, ten P M on Saturday, they have to cut it off, and they can't start that up at the second, before seven A M.
It's been a while since I read the full two hundred pages, I did it twice a year or something ago, the, the event venue and the agriculture, the only places to even allow amplified music correct to be event venues, not like additional use permits.
And our notice does not include a dust.
Does not.
And most of the time, that is because you don't have a dustable meter, you don't have the equipment to, to monitor, and that's why for rule of localities, we don't include a dustable, because we don't want to require you to go out and get equipment to enforce that.
So what is the expectancy there?
What's, sorry.
It's not, that doesn't matter all the way around.
All right. The, the following acts, among others, will be clearly loud and disturbing and unreasonable noise in violation of this section, such emanation shall not be deemed to be exclusive. The using, operating, or permitting to be played, used, or operated, whether or not upon or attached to a motor vehicle operating on any street, camping, any radio or television set, musical instrument, phonograph, bell, whistle, loudspeaker, amplifier, or a machine or device for producing or reproducing sound in such manner as disturbs or keeps quiet, comforts the neighboring inhabitants, inhabitants, or at any time of louder volume that is necessary for convenience hearing for the person who are in the room, vehicle, or chamber in which such machine or device is operated, and or voluntary, voluntary listeners thereto. The operation of any such set instrument, phonograph, machine, or device between hours of twelve, midnight, and seven A M in such manner as is completely audible at a distance of fifty feet from the building structure or vehicle in which it is located shall be prima facie evidence of a violation of this section, the provisions of this section, and not by a motor vehicle driven in a duly authorized program.
So if I'm up on a place like that, and you're fifty feet from it, you can hear it then, you can enforce it?
If it's out of that.
Well, I, I sort of go back to the thing, is it, is the person got good hearing or bad hearing?
Turn mine up a little bit.
I think they kicked that away from y'all, right, on the noise part, on the automobile, what is it, on the inspection agents, noise that they wouldn't pass them, but then you had, uh, mechanics, and then you had people that.
Oh, well, first off, uh, now, we, we can never reject for, for loud, because we can only reject for all the.
I thought, I thought you could.
Yeah, it's like when they, they can't reject for the, we are.
If, if this is put in, let's say it's put in, it's in an ordinance, correct?
Well, not currently.
No, I said.
It was like, you're still high to that, okay.
Yeah. If it's put in, it's an ordinance, but who's going to enforce it?
I don't know, we'll give it to you. Well, because it's going to more than likely be after our working hours.
That's exactly what I was looking at, does it conflict with, because we already have somewhat when they go out, or is it sort of confusing between the two? One is midnight, and one of them is ten.
Right, would it cancel one or the other hour?
Well, you, you don't want to tell a deputy two different things here in these four hours. Well, you, you don't want to tell a deputy two different things here, and he's going out there.
Well, this would be pertaining to agritourism.
Right, this would be, this would be solely agritourism, um, and.
Like the hand in my house, bloody my garden, and now we're hanging out.
Yeah, and you had a boombox bloody in my pool, but that was too loud. It's not agritourism either.
What's, what's, I mean, that's, we, we got to understand that, because that is straight when there comes to agritourism, uh, event.
I don't think the statute, I don't think it's.
But we can hold on to the statute, it goes, and Trump crap running around, and tractor.
He's agritourism. He's got a boombox stretched in the top of the. And I know y'all, all have looked at it, but the one thing that gets me about this, well, you know, it's, it's.
In other words, make them have, come, right, what they initially said, they had to respond, and if this is, this, this is any follow-up, they're like, we've done a little bit of your initial proposal, we have, you know, and, and, if, if we conform to the statute, I need to hear that.
Basically, they, basically, they, 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 they're such a small.
It, it, yeah, I mean, I mean, even if they don't respond, that's a message there, too.
Rebecca, I, I am a big fan of agritourism, a big, big fan, I think it's wonderful, I fully support it, and things you describe are all things that are good. I don't know that outdoor amplified music is relevant or necessary for those type of events, maybe something they would want to do, could be able, could maybe have a conditional use permit if they wanted to use amplified music. Rather than by right, I was saying.
That was, that was his, his question as well. Um, my immediate thought is, do you know, I think what you do there, this, you could say, well, quarter million is an advanced venue, and I think someone would argue and say, I'm not an event venue, I'm agritourism, and I'm allowed by law, that would be my consensus there.
So they'd have to be a brewery, or a winery, or have crops and field.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's the example of, of, of people that have a friend over, makes me, makes me rapid, but he doesn't have crops and field or a wine, or a brewery, yeah.
Right, and, and so in that instance, we, we go back on the noise ordinance, you know, he, he has to comply with the noise ordinance, which actually says twelve PM, so what we're trying to do is, is sprinkle this a little bit, and eliminate some additional hours of noise. But if you want to follow the, just the noise ordinance, if you can sample, and we don't have to, you know, have a different climate, and we should start at, you know, well, midnight, seven AM.
I mean, if this was having to be, whether it's a dance hall, or, or agritourism, could we, could we coordinate for this type of venue not allowing amplified music? And, and if we can't, how do we tell that they can't do it between nine PM and, and seven AM, so long as it's amplified, let's go down fifty feet, or whatever, farms or ashes. Uh, amplified music, when, when we have a lot of neighbors that are really.
Sound travels. Sound travels.
It does, but if the sounds get in the way, I mean, in the city, two or three downs, plenty of people can't hear it, but in the country, everyone forever.
I, I have my own personal experience for that, you know, I can't say that's a big, I'm not sure about things that don't keep being amplified. If you do for them, that's something that I can look into. Um, so, you know, my suggestion would be, you know, let me know if that's a consent, if I find out, you know, yes, you can say no amplified music, is that what you want to put into the ordinance for the five? If you cannot say, you know, there's, you know, you can't say no to any amplified music, then what is the ultimate? Do you want to just stick with the noise ordinance, or would you want to do the nine, the seven, the?
And the only thing you're saying is amplified music, aren't there other noises that could emit, or something like that?
Or how about a PA?
That's, that's considered music.
Somebody announcing.
Next door starts in ten minutes.
Is that covered?
Miss Davis, uh, from Burton, is asking, recognize here, if we want to get her on, maybe she has some.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Okay, Kelly.
All right, Rachel.
Okay, how about now?
What's that?
Okay, that amplified music was directly from state code, that's, that is the only deviation that you are allowed. I, I'm having a, quite a bit of trouble hearing some of the conversation, so, but I just wanted to highlight that along these lines. The deviation from your standard noi- noise ordinance is allowed for amplified music, and that is directly from state code.
It didn't say the code, it didn't require it.
I thought this, like I said at the beginning, if it was in state code, so.
But we can leave it to that, but, uh.
It was always ordinance, it was always, that's right, that, that.
So that, that, I'm, a reasonable question, unless the noise ordinance, or if you have any stricter, and the.
This is, this is any kind of problem?
We don't allow that.
Going back again to the event, yeah, what kind of restrictions do we have on that?
Or conditional use permit, right, right, I think you're talking about, you're thinking, right, but then, then.
It's a conditional use permit, and so any conditional use permit, we could.
There, there, there are two places where amplified music will be allowed. One, the event venue should be at complete control over the conditional use permit, to keep down the problem. Agritourism, which apparently is allowed by code, and we can expect it to come together.
So why do we need this allowed, for a reason, state?
It makes these.
Well, it's not a state code, it's an option that we can put into our own ordinance as allowed by state, but since, again, Dillon Rule, this is the only tool that they've given us, as they, oh, and by the way, you can also, everything else is already been done for us. Thank you, that was that.
If you guys don't mind, just for sound purposes, if y'all can either pass the microphone around, or everybody just speak up a little, so Kelly can kind of catch everything, sorry, we don't have more microphones.
That's okay.
The other thing that, um, I'll point out is under section thirty dash three, four of your noise ordinance, and I'm not, again, I heard somebody, I think, reading your noise ordinance, but there is an exception for music and entertain, and entertainment festival, festivals, and normal operations of agricultural and forestry customary in these operations. So there's an excep- exception to your noise or ordinance built in. So this is extra protection for these agritourism uses, that's otherwise exempt from your noise ordinance.
So it would appear that then, under these exceptions, we could be leaving ourselves somewhat vulnerable, were we not to adopt this section, would you agree?
Yes, and that was, that was the purpose of this recommendation.
Okay. As the exception, yes, musical or entertainment festivals, and the normal operation of agriculture and forestry machinery, equipment tools, and the usual customary operation of a farm or forestry operation shall be exempt. Don't necessarily think we, we want to or need to include that last section, but definitely, uh, music or entertainment festivals might leave us open to some unpleasant, uh, outcomes, if, if we left it just up to the noise ordinance then. Okay, so then are we in agreement then that we would incorporate this?
Yeah.
Okay, we have unanimous consensus to incorporate this.
Question. Would this include holidays?
Yeah, there's no exception in, out of the noise ordinance, or what's he proposed here for holidays?
I, I'd recommend making an exception for holidays, because there might be a special occasion for, for the, I'm trying to think of a, of an event. So I guess it would fall under an event, that they have a special.
Right, right, if they're not agritourism, and it's an event, then they need a conditional use permit.
Yeah, so that'd be covered either way, okay, all right.
So now, with that item. And then move into other items. So, um, we found just a few things in definitions while we were preparing for the open house. We would suggest making a couple edits there, adding, um, definition for building height, changing the definition of frontage, lot, lot frontage, and then releasing frontage road, um, from the definition. The memo details, um, exactly what I'm proposing there in terms of, of striking language, um, for those items. Mostly, it's just a clean up, in one of the definitions, we referred to, um, through the definition of building height, and then I realized there wasn't a definition for building height, so we're adding that in. Um, and then frontage road was defined and conflicted a little bit with lot frontage, and so we're just cleaning those items up. So that's exactly the thing. Are you okay with me making those edits for the definition?
Yeah.
Anyone disagree with any of those? No, I'll make those edits. And then, just looking, um, to you all, to see if you, um, either with you, if you have found anything else, or if you thought about anything else that you would like to edit, if that is right.
Mr. Green was, was typo, gang, he doesn't have anything, that's probably not in there.
We don't have all the stuff, this is just.
Oh, well, you would have gotten it.
Right, right.
I'm sure you didn't have it.
Right, yeah, of course, we'll have it by the time it gets to the public count.
My is not typo, uh, the solar section of the ordinance, y'all added code citations that allow.
Yeah, the, uh, the, the solar ordinance, we were looking for verbiage that would give us the opportunity to take full advantage of, of any solar farm that want to come here. Y'all added the code citations, but those specifically allow a locality to change the tax code to, to get, gather additional revenue, uh, or, uh, there's the ability, from my, from what I understand, to do something related to the site, and have them, uh, uh, make it more attractive to us to recommend approval. So, um, there's nothing in the ordinance other than citations, so at this point, if we approve the ordinance, if the supervisors approve it in October, and we get ten applications in November, won't we lose that opportunity to gain the revenue that we need for all that land going, add from farming and into solar?
No, I mean, you can always negotiate, the, the purpose for putting the citation in here really is to let the agriculture know, and we know about this. And, you know, we are entitled to, you know, conversations.
So it does not need to be in the, in the, in the ordinance for us to say, we don't want your, uh, solar farm here, because it's not attractive to the county, and, and there, they know, they can then make offers to make it more appealing, because we're taking an awful lot of farmland out of farming. That being said, some farmers are old and don't want to farm and rather do solar, but the county has, in the past, gained little benefit from the solar farms we've gotten, so we don't have to actually have something in the code specifically, uh, to allow us to negotiate with them, is that, is that correct?
Right, because, you know, each, I think what you're talking about is, you know, being specific and saying, this is what we want for, you know, like, but every site is going to be different, and may, you know, you want to have that negotiation ability to discuss and see what they have to offer.
The negotiations, um, for additional revenue, additional, uh, perks, or what you might want to call it, is that, um, is that basically only allowed in opportunity zones? And do we have to declare an opportunity zone to be able to take advantage of that?
No, there's, it's, it's, um, the state has said, you can be a eligible foreign opportunity zone, so even if it's not declared, um, you can have, you know, those numbers, the same as other opportunity zones, then you can be considered for that.
Do we, do we have to be approved by foreign opportunity zone? Do we have to be approved by some state or federal agency?
No.
So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, the supervisors, and this falls at its side of the planning commission, the supervisors would, would, would have two things they could do. They could, uh, replace their machinery and tools tax for solar with an energy tax of up to fourteen hundred per megawatt for a project, or we could negotiate for, uh, some added inducement to make the, the project more attractive, correct? We could not do both, and if that's the case, then the supervisors would need to decide, if they want to have that change the tax code for machinery and, and tools for the solar, or go the other route. But in the meantime, any application that comes in, once this zoning ordinance is approved, the machinery and tools would, would not be an option they have for those, uh, applications, they could subsequently adopt it. But for any applications that came in after it's approved in October, they would not have the ability to, to go backwards and, and, and do the machinery and tools tax for those applications. We could still negotiate, uh, under, under section twenty-two eighty-eight point eight, but they would not have that option, correct?
I believe so, I would need to, to look at a, a little closer, it's been a while since I have reviewed the details of those, and which ones you can do, there are some that you can do together, um, there are, you know, things that, yeah, want to elect to do this, and elect to do the other option, but I would need to.
Okay, thank you.
So in, in looking at that, um, we would want to know, um, do we need to include any of this in our ordinance? Or can that be done as a part of a conditional use?
That can be done, like, so right now, what we've done is, is put reference to those items in there, so that you all don't forget them, and so that any advocate knows that you are aware of them, and, you know, to put that up.
That answered it?
We still have it for ourselves, I hope.
Yes.
Until we, until we.
And, and I will say, um, perfectly, we, and I have been as involved in it lately, but we do, um, have staff that's been reviewing options, and we can look at your tax rates, and some, you know, general size of facilities, and do some comparisons, and help you see what is the more lucrative option, what's the better option for the, for the county development, but that's something that we've done. Help you do is to, to, to.
Anyone else?
I don't, that's up to you.
Okay, but, any other edits?
Uh, yes, I just want to note that, um, the changes you all made in the, uh, rezoning, um, I, the public has said, and I've been an advocate of this, is that we should have a site plan, uh, so that when we rezone, we know what the rezoning is for. The public has made it very clear by about ninety percent that they want to know that. However, what you all have done for the concept plan, I am very happy with, and I think that, that, without putting too great a burden on the applicant, does, uh, do what we in the public want done.
It pleases me a great deal to hear you say that, Don, John and I were ever here like, oh, boy. Anyone else?
One other thing I had.
I knew we got up too easy.
Have to do with the section on site plans, and, as you all are looking for the page number, it's page one seventy-four. When you all made the changes in the rezoning, you also made a change in the site plan requirement, because previously we had said, applications require change in the zoning ordinance, you took that out, I'm fine with that. But then the, the only thing that required that the zoning administrator would have to look at in order to determine if this is a, uh, if they're required, if this requires actions by the planning commission and the board of supervisors, the only thing that would require those application, those actions would be a conditional use permit. When you look at the, uh, matrix on page nine. When you look at the, uh, matrix on page ninety-one, ninety-two, and through there, you look at the things that require a conditional use permit, and you look at the items that are required by right, which wouldn't require any type of review by the planning commission and board of supervisors, and would not require a public hearing, um, automobile auction, auction house, dealership, um, brewery or distillery, brew pub or tasting room, uh, commercial indoor sports recreation, just a, a whole num- a whole number of items there that, um, would not require anything but approval by the zoning administrator. So what I would like to see, and what we currently have, is that anything within the transportation corridor overlay, it requires that review and public hearing, the review by, or requires to be ordered by the planning commission and board of supervisors for review and for public hearing. Have you got any comment on that? Or does anyone else have any comment on that for that matter?
Um, you know, so they're trying to, to make this, you know, as business friendly and thoughtful, that's one of the things that we've heard from stakeholder groups and, and through survey. And, you know, we feel, you know, that staff can review site plans based on what you have on your ordinance, looking at your landscaping plan that you require, looking at, you know, setbacks that are required in all sites, not just, you know, transportation corridor or overlay, but that area as well. And so they can, you know, review that site plan and say, yes, it meets the requirements of the ordinance. And because by state code, when a site plan is produced and it meets the requirements of the ordinance, you cannot say no. Um, and so, you know, it, it has to be approved. It can, if it's missing items, you can say, you're missing this, you're not complying with our ordinance, you need to fix this. Then once they do those things and they resubmit that plan, and they get complied with the things that you brought up that they have, have missed, then that plan has to be approved. Um, and so in our thinking, it, it takes more time, you know, to come to support the planning commission for that decision when staff could do that in-house, making sure that it meets your ordinance.
Oh, what about the public?
If a by right use, if the public is concerned about that particular use and the impact, then maybe that's a use that shouldn't be by right, maybe it should be conditional.
What are all the localities doing for this?
They are, are doing what we have here, replanting, you know, concept plans, um, if it needs to be rezoned, otherwise allowing administrative approval.
Sherry, you come to work on it.
We're not going to still do, like, that Friday, but before the news, Seattle is in the, you know, just a little cat in the corner.
So, basically for everybody else's information too, um, if Sherry gets a site plan for any of these items, that's not conditional use, then the first thing she can require, or she will require, is a, um, preliminary site plan, which she can review in the time that's required on a site plan for things to be approved. Doesn't start until she has negotiated with the applicant for the preliminary site plan. Is that correct? So the clock doesn't start running on the other items that has to go before review from VDOT, from the health department and so forth, until that preliminary site plan has been reviewed. And the only other item I have is, I don't see any mention in here anywhere about, um, the, wait a second, I'll, I'll get it. Uh, the requirement by VDOT for a traffic impact analysis is, that's not any place that I see in our, in the proposed ordinance. I know it's required by VDOT under VAC, whatever, um, but we don't have it anyplace in the ordinance so that the applicant knows that they have to have that, um, traffic impact analysis. Now, under this, under the VDOT's code, everything doesn't require the traffic impact analysis at only anything over one hundred vehicle trips per hour in the peak hour. That equates to about nine hundred vehicle trips per day. But anything under nine hundred vehicle trips per day, or a hundred per hour in peak hour, uh, would not require traffic impact analysis, but it still requires review by VDOT.
You almost said everything to VDOT.
Yeah, but does, does, my question is, does the applicant know that?
If we need to really have a VDOT to address whether or not they're allowed with our traffic study.
So you, you put it forward.
So...
Will they send comments back when you send them off from your plan? Will they send their comments back if they require it in their comments and they're obligated to?
Okay, so you can, you can do that in the preliminary site plan analysis.
We've some formulary to do on our, to the program. Um, we have our utility partners, we have, you know, fire departments, we have, we have...
Okay. Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that that is covered because, um, all of us need to know what kind of traffic impact that, that we're going to have and, um...
Does it will come in all the formularies, um, where we have other things which is dead, um, on the, um?
Yeah, yes. And by the way, John, Breeden and I had a discussion today on the cluster development. The new ordinance would have only allowed fifty-seven houses on that park, on that piece of property. That's the one.
All right, anybody else?
It's right, right down the road from me. It's, um, on Fender Road. Yeah. It was, he had come in, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, uh, and applied for a subdivision there, and he's put more houses in the, uh, cluster subdivision that would happen, you know?
Subdivision, that was, that was by right, was that subdivision by right? Well, the subdivision initially was, was not for the by right, it was approved, uh, cluster by right. So, so again, uh, so once again, they'll, they'll, uh, they tell, uh, you know, cluster... Right, at the time, we didn't have a cluster, uh, part in our ordinance. We were forced by the courts, I think, in fact, to, right, and adopt that cluster ordinance because when, uh, Mr. Greenwood and I got on the board, the other board had been dragging his feet for something like four or five years on it, so we, uh... Which is, which is coming out of, out of step of the requirements, the state requirement, you must have a cluster subdivision ordinance, we did not have any before. Right.
We never comment for the ordinance, we never edit.
Okay. Next up?
Okay, so process moving forward from here. We just had, um, the results, work sessions on the results on the open house, and then making final, um, changes to the graph. So I will incorporate those, get that, um, to staff, and then we can move on to public hearings and adoption. Next slide. So then just, I know looking formally at next, uh, step next date, August, I'm going to get that final draft, let staff review, make sure I've incorporated the things, you know, tonight as you have instructed, and then we can move, I think, um, sharing it with those, September seventh would be the planning commission's public hearing date, and then September twenty-seventh could be the board of supervisors' public hearing date. That is, it, for me tonight, and I just want to thank you for your participation and working through this last work session.
Very good. There is one other agenda item, and I don't know if, uh, that one is for you or not, but it was discussing the Rona community comments. That's not for them. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay. So in October and November, we'll be able to put this in effect.
Right. All right, so is staff going to handle that, uh, three A two sub item that we have on the agenda?
We put this on the agenda. We had, um, some property owners that wanted, um, this brought up in board of, board of supervisors and the planning commission to maybe, uh, consider any changes, uh, with bedded breakfast and camp sites and entertainment in the residential agricultural area. They wanted, um, their, their concerns noted during all of this.
I'm not sure what, who, who, question about this, if we have a solid, a whole question.
Right, well, that, that just, it's on the agenda, so I just wanted to see what level of discussion we're having on it right now.
I think this is more just a, something that they wanted to put together for you guys to kind of look at, see if you guys had any concerns with this. This has been somewhat of an...
It's been ongoing.
Ongoing thing, and I think that they're just more or less looking to see if there are going to be changes that will be incorporated into this ordinance that will, I guess, maybe rectify what they're trying to do.
I, I think we've already had a fair amount of discussion. That was one, that was not the only group that had some concerns about. I had comments from other folks as well on amplified music. Um, and so from what I understand, would have been very pertinent for the Berkeley group, however, I think we've kind of already covered it in that amplified music, as I understand, the draft ordinance will be allowed in the agritourism area, which, which we're required to have that, but that's only breweries or winery and so forth and so on, and then the event venues, and that's only that conditional use permit, and no other commercial enterprises are allowed to have amplified music under the draft ordinance. So I think we've addressed that part of it. Now, as far as the campsites versus the, thank you for, I've forgotten all about that. As far as campsites and camping, in looking at our definitions, we allow, uh, camping, it sounds like RV camping, uh, association camping, actual campgrounds, I'm not sure we even allow that in the draft. Uh, that may be one thing we want to look at. Do we want to allow that? Uh, once we have the comp plan under our belt and the citizens have spoken, we're going to need to make some other changes to the ordinance anyway. The, some of the things the Berkeley group has talked about, some of the things the Hill group has talked about, uh, we may want to revisit the ordinance, I'm sorry, sometime early next year to make it even better based on the comp plan.
Item, I, I don't know.
Yes, I, yes, not the whole ordinance, but, but particular items brought, brought up by the Berkeley group, uh, as some, some recommendations to consider for the future, as well as the Hill group, who already has some recommendations for us, will probably have some more strategies in the comp plan, as well as any other little oopses that we, we catch, uh, once it's actually been, been, uh, been approved and, and staff is actually dealing with it. So, uh, I think, I think there are some questions about definitions, the campsite, I'm not sure it warrants slowing down the, the, uh, the ordinance, although as we look more closely at it, we may see that we do need to do some tweaking, which the public can bring to our attention. We, we can make changes at the public hearing, and even once we've recommended approval, uh, you guys will have a second public hearing, and there may be things that people don't bring to our attention until that public hearing. So there are additional opportunities to fine tune, but a lot of the big issues we've talked about, I think we've largely covered. And so again, campsites, camping, I want us to make sure that we have that the way we want it to be. As far as the noise ordinance, I think we're covered if the ordinance goes into effect as written. I may be mistaken.
I see the, in the packet, in what we got in the packet, that there have been at least three letters written to the, um, there's never been any outcome from those letters, where they just dropped, not in force, not carried forward, that there were threats to go into court. Uh, what happened to all of that?
Uh, we did get a permit, um, uh, Mr. Edder had actually given a little bit permit, um, for a campsite recreational area and a bed breakfast. Of course, it does not address, um, live entertainment or noise or any, anything like that.
So, sure, so the question then goes back to one of enforcement again, and has your office received complaints recently? And what actions have been taken?
Um, I did receive a complaint a few months ago about the noise. Uh, we have not done anything other than give you all the information that they requested that we make sure that you received.
Does the noise, the orders that, that you were in, is that, would that apply?
Well, sure, but I think more specifically here, we're talking about activities that are taking place outside of permitted ones, on a, on a particular site with a business that is operating on that site.
So with this proposed ordinance, you would not be able to do the, the live entertainment without a conditional use permit?
Right. And so we have instances here wherein they have carried on with those activities outside of the, the ones that we already have issued permits for. You know, what, what enforcement options are available to us and what, what can we take? Because, you know, I know these people have been looking for relief for quite some time here, and Mr. Sneed, whatever his intentions are, continues to operate outside of, of the permits that we've issued, um, we need to do something about that.
Do you have the health order to find him?
If he's in violation of something in our ordinance, uh, we can send him a letter, and then of course, if he doesn't comply, then we can take him to court.
So if he's already received three letters, not like, thank God, or decided to make one to the person, is that enough?
We have to actually physically see the violation going on, or we would have to subpoena somebody that has seen it to go to court as a witness.
Right, well, I don't think you'd have an issue with that latter part. Um, you know, I, I guess unless somebody disagrees on the board of supervisors here, I, I would encourage us to, to move forward with some enforcement actions there, uh, because it's, it's been going on long enough, and I know there's been turnover, that's been making it difficult to, 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 to keep on top of this one particularly. But, um, you know, it, it's been going on quite, quite frankly, long enough, and, and I'm, I'm quite annoyed at the fact that we have attempted to resolve this, uh, with Mr. Sneed by issuing the permits that he said he wanted and needed, but he continues to operate a business that, that's outside of that, to his premise. And quite frankly, I mean, it, you know, everything else that we're talking about here in these zoning, zoning ordinance is, if, if we don't have some teeth to our enforcement, you know, we're, we're not accomplishing a whole lot with, with what this exercise we're going through anyway. So, you know, um, I, I'd like, there, there's a couple of issues, and maybe, maybe, um, I just need to document a few of those that, that I had sent to predecessor that, that are ongoing, and we need to get some enforcement actions going in some different areas and start being visible in that arena again. And that way, as we move forward with adopting these, and, you know, people start to read and understand them, they also understand that they need to comply.
If this is promptly located where you see violation outside of the property?
It's certainly where you can hear violations outside of the property, and as far as their documentation of illegal fireworks, loud music.
There are about six or seven houses right across the road.
Vehicle traffic that would, that would certainly indicate that he exceeds his allowable limit of persons on the property at any given point in time.
I was, I was trying to count how many he could have, there's like five, can he, if he gets back to half?
Well, that's what he, he wasn't issued... Well, that's what he, he wasn't issued permits for the cabins, it's a, right, it's a campsite where he can have a tent.
Just one campsite?
Right. So, I mean, I think we're talking about, right, right, but I think in total, we're talking about sixteen?
I am not sure of that, I know there is a number of people that he can have.
Is that in addition to the bio cabins?
Right, there's eight in the bed and breakfast. The cabins were never permitted. He, he applied to have cabin sites on the property, but he withdrew that.
So they can permit him cabin sites?
Yes, it's basically, it's a, it's a site that's identified on his site plan where he can have a tent.
If he has.
Or multiple tents.
That probably is bed and breakfast, it, it's a need operation.
Right, I mean.
And I'm glad to have it here, provided it's not a nuisance to nature.
Well, right, and provided that the permits that he applies for and, and receives, he complies with. Right. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't need any business that's not going to comply with the permits that they receive, and he needs more to accommodate that, and he needs to go through the appropriate processes and comply with those permits.
So his overnight guest is eight for the bed and breakfast, and six for campsite.
Okay, so fourteen.
They can set him to five, or give him a certain.
It just says overnight guest eight.
And then, so you could, so they could definitely, what is any guest during the day, so long as they didn't spend, spend the night in that property, is that correct?
Well, then you get into again, right, into, into event venues at that point in time, and, you know, there's, there's well documented evidence that he is in fact running a business, that he advertises and markets. It's not just Memorial Day cookouts.
So in the letter that was written to him, and I checked his, yes, it said he had to cease offering day passes and having special events at the property, and limit the overnight guests to eight for the bed and breakfast, and six for the camping area.
Excuse me, I respond to you, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, and I mean, this is dangerous, and all of these things, and there's, and you just not had this. The sheriff walked in, said my property, he talked to you times about my interest in police, and what part of words, he said, that's not legal, and he said, the scene, you know, for messages, never had our work again. So, and pictures, is that, is that, you're right, that's part of words.
Right. So, Mr. Sneed, I, I don't think that this is the appropriate time for that conversation, but I, I would, and, and you and I have had discussions before as well, and I've, I've been to your property and I've visited, that submit something, we have a public comment period, obviously, at our, at our upcoming meeting, where you're welcome to speak. And then, of course, I'm available, we're all available via phone calls, personal visits, emails, whatever, but I don't expect, you, we don't have public comment on the agenda. I don't want to belabor this session anymore with, with extended back and forth between you and your neighbor, because I know you have extended disagreements over what you say you operate versus what they say you operate. So I, I don't, right, I think you get the point.
I don't think they can see this, they saw it incorrectly. And we're not making these decisions on that operation site, it's a need operation, I constitute for a position, you're for a beautiful, beautiful place, it's a need operation, but to our ordinances, not just your operation, but all operations, all, all over, all over the county, especially county, works of state, operations all over the county, that we want to be able to do as much as we can for the added impact of the, and, and that is sometimes a problem with this noise, again, amplified noise music all day long, it's not good.
Right, so well, again, I would encourage you to, to, to write each of us and, and call each of us individually, and then, and then speak at the public comment period as well, you're more than welcome to do that also. But I don't, I don't want to open this meeting up beyond its, its stated purpose here tonight, which is a meeting of these two boards here. Thank you. Okay?
And then just real briefly, it's not part of the subdivision ordinance, but we did have somebody that would want for you all to consider adopting something in the ordinance on noxious plants, especially bamboo. There is something in the state code that allows the locality to do so, but not too many localities have adopted anything on this. I think it's going to be hard to enforce, I guess you really, you, you don't know who's planting one of those.
Well, that's same, well, we've, that's been around forever, that's taken over three sixty, but can we count that as an option?
Well, right, but I, I mean, I've, I've seen particular, I, in fact, I've got a, I've got a close friend of mine right now, lives in Williamsburg, who's dealing with a neighbor who has planted bamboo, has invaded his property, and basically, he's got little tiny, like, sharp sticks coming out of his backyard, and, so, okay.
Just a thought.
All right, no, an interesting one.
Bumper zone.
Except, except your bumper zone would spread to about fifty feet.
Right, right, same thing with, same thing with green fragmites, right? Those of us that have been doing this a long time remember green fragmites, right?
The, the bamboo have a canopy, to help take care of that problem. All you have to do is take the trench, with the trench, and then just put it shooters down that field, and then take that.
Okay. All right, does anybody have anything else pertinent to our purposes here tonight? Okay. Well, then, I will entertain a motion, well, you go first.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the planning commission. So moved. Seconded. All three will say aye.
Entertain a motion to adjourn the board of supervisors. Moved seconded. Ms. Brand, no, no, John, Ms. Brand, it's called.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
And Mr. Jackson.
Aye.